Good evening. Now I'd like to bring the regular evening meeting of the township of Langley council to order. First item is adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Move by councillor Ferguson, second by councillor Davis and councillor Woodward. I know there's some amendments to it.
Yeah, I think I just want to bring up a potential amendment to I five that seems to just slightly missed the amendment that occurred at third reading regarding the hours restriction. So I just want to make sure, I think I've already brought that up, so we've got that recorded. Okay, great, thank you.
And it's, so just to be clear, gee, I just want to get to it. It's I five? Yeah. So the changes are what exactly? So we can get into all of our agendas. Ms. Bauer?
No, I don't want to do that.
Yeah, we're doing it now because it's a, okay, I lost it here. Yeah, here we go. Ms. Bauer, the change to be consistent with the third reading is?
Um, to be consistent with third readings, um, the hours were modified that the hours of liquor service be Monday to Thursday, 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m., and Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. Or 9:00 p.m., pardon me.
Okay, and that's what it says in here. So I've got, is that?
It's got seven days a week. Yeah, Monday, April 1st, and it's got seven days a week.
Okay, this one's?
And then the amendment is missing. Oh, it's not missing. Counsel recommend, yeah, it says recommend. Okay, so it is actually in there.
It's in there?
I'm sure it's consistent.
Because the copy I have has it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is, okay.
Actually, it is. So it's actually listing the old hours and then they're amended below, which is confusing. Yeah, it is confusing, so.
Okay.
Well, it's just, it's showing up differently than it was at third reading.
Okay. So now we're clear. Okay, great, thanks. Okay, with that, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Posed, carried? And now move on to adoption of the minutes, the regular evening council meeting of March 11th and the public hearing meeting of March 11th. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Kuntz, and second by councillor Davis. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Posed and carried. And I'll move on to delegations, and let me just get back to my agenda here. Our first delegation is Mr. Greg Drew. Come forward. And just for all the delegation's information, just provide us with your name and where you live, and you have five minutes to present. You'll see the lights flashing when it goes solid red in front of you, that little box, and the big hook comes out. Okay, welcome here.
Dear Mayor and Council, my name is Greg Drew. I live at 9978 Allard Crescent. I have lived there for 31 years. I'm here to talk to you tonight about some safety concerns that are becoming a huge issue that escalate as we head into the summer season on Allard Crescent. Those issues are speeding and the noise of vehicles that use the road at any time of the day, number two, the interaction that's taken place on the road between cyclists, pedestrians, and vehicles, and number three, the use of the road by tractor trailers and dump trucks who do not follow truck bylaw rules to access businesses along Allard Crescent. Allard Crescent residents that I spoke to expressed the same fears I have. The speed of the vehicles on McKinnon Crescent and Allard Crescent when we exit our driveways to get onto the street is huge. I witnessed a near T-bone of a neighbor's car by a vehicle going over 100 kilometers an hour when the neighbor was trying to come out of his driveway. I thought he was going to die right in front of me the other day. My wife told me a few years ago there was a cyclist died on my driveway after he left his bicycle. Whether it was a medical issue or he had an encounter with the vehicle, nobody knew. I ran into another fellow that I worked with in the fire department who did CPR on a gentleman off a bike in the middle of the Allard Crescent just down by Steve Tidball's place. Two people have died at my end of the crescent on bikes in the last few years. It doesn't matter where we live on the crescent, we all have our stories and concerns that we can tell you about incidents and crashes. There are kids and families walking and using the road, and sometimes pets and wildlife trying to cross. I've lost three cats in the last four years, none in the 25 previous years to that. Councils move, or council of the past have done many things to try and make Allard Crescent safer and to slow traffic down. The installation of speed bumps at the far end of 208 side many years ago and then were removed subsequently because of motorhome damages. The road construction at my end of Allard Crescent that took the highs and lows out of the road that made the road now a freeway for the cars to go through because they can see a little bit farther has really been a better visibility, more speed, and that's where our issues are getting out of our driveways now. And council's most recent expenditures have been the widening of the bike lanes for the bikes to use and make it safer. But the bikers don't use the bike lane because of all the crap in the bike lane at the edge that pop their tires, so they ride in the middle of the road in groups of two to 50 and think they own the road. It's the encounters that I'm seeing in front of my house was that vehicles and the bikes come to the stop sign and the verbal confrontations I'm hearing that are going to escalate. I myself was assaulted in front of my house slowing down to turn into my driveway about three months ago by a guy who was PO'd at me for going 15 kilometers an hour because I'm trying to turn into my driveway. I took a physical assault from a gangbanger. Uh, I have taken many steps to try and get action for my concerns but to no avail over the last few years. Many years ago, I spoke at council to try and get Coast, or not Coast, McDonald Cedar to stop using the crescent for the trucks going down to dump their hog fuel. I fought that and won. The bylaws state shortest route off of shortest route onto the truck route. This is not taking place at our end of the crescent. I have had staff come and measure it with me, and the shortest route is off of 208 and 96, but there's a no truck sign there. And the other shortest route is the same distance, it's off of 102B and 201st, but it's a longer round trip for the vehicles. So anyways, problems were solved for many years when I was here until Coast was sold three years ago to a company that's been running tractor trailers from the Fort Langley airport ever since. They're hauling tractor trailers that are upwards of 30-plus feet and then up to 53-foot trailers coming out of there. When these trailers go through four 90-degree curves at my end of the crescent, those trailers off-track into oncoming lanes. When they turn the corner at Allard and McKinnon, they must take all four lanes to get around the corner. There's been three vehicles, three trailers in the ditch at that corner already. After years of dealing with the RCMP, the CVSE, bylaws, and talk to council members and stuff, we got a traffic counter put out, and the information that they can get off of that is amazing. So I just want to give you one statistic here. Forty-five percent of the vehicles were over 10 kilometers an hour over the speed limit on Allard Crescent, and 10% of them exceed 70K, and that's in a 50K zone. What can be done? Let's do another count, so, but put it out not January 3rd to the 10th, but do it in the summer months when the vehicles are on the road now and going fast. Have the RCMP enforce some traffic speeds like they do out on River Road around Allard Crescent where we're inviting families to use this crescent. And not only that, how about when we have a couple thousand bikes ride through in a day on a pedal bike fundraiser? Talked to Ron Martini and Coast Cranberries about using the road and being corporate responsible citizens. And number four, no truck sign at the corner of 96 and McKinnon to keep the trucks off of this end of the crescent. I would like to try and ask your help in making this road safer. I have always, already lost a child, as some of you know, due to a car crash, and I've tried to make this city a safer community by fighting for paid firefighters and swimming pools and everything else. Now I want you to look after our street, please.
Yes? Thank you. I have a question from councillor. Councillor Ferguson?
Oh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Drew, Greg, you had the opportunity to speak with you about your problem, and I know we do have a report that's come forward, and I imagine there's other things we can do. I did want, as you stood up here, I wanted to remind myself and others in the audience that you and a group of your friends a number of years ago were spearheaded or have the Walnut Grove pool 50 meters instead of 25, so certainly your time and effort and your neighbors is appreciated, and I do, I am aware that your son did pass away, I'm aware of that. My question to you is, have you had a chance to talk, not only our staff, but the RCMP as well, especially if you talk about assaults or other things, violence and things like that?
Everything has been reported. There's police files for everything that's gone on, and one thing I'd like to say about the pool, because I am using it now, you need to get some new lockers in there so that the doors don't stay open, and guys split their heads wide open on them when they stand up. I've seen three bad.
Got one time.
Three bad ones already.
Okay, we'll pass that on.
That's to be passed on, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Richter?
Yep. I wanted to refer to the report that councillor Ferguson spoke about, and we did get it in our package last week, and essentially, have you seen this report yet?
I did see some of it. They tried to show me a one-day sample of it on, I think it was the middle of the week, and I said, "Come on, man, you had the thing out for a week. Give me the whole week so I can, we can see what's going on. You can handpick any day you want and give me whatever numbers you want." I don't think so. So I did see some of it, did get some of it explained to me, and yes, we do have a big issue out there when it comes to vehicles going over the speed limit.
Well, they're saying in this report that, given the results of the traffic survey with a relatively low ADT, low number of trucks per day, and observed speeds that are consistent with other rural roads in the township, staff will not be taking any further action.
Really?
So...
Well, you know, it's funny, when I started talking to staff, I said to them, "I'm trying to get some speed limit signs here to slow people down." I said, "My son died in a car crash at 1:00 in the morning. He had a car crash, died three days later, but by noon the next day, the township had signs up to say the road may need 90-degree curve." We didn't even ask for them, but the day after my kid crashes, within 12 hours, there's signs up. But now I'm trying to make it safer for somebody else's family, and I get told no response anymore? You've got to be kidding me. I would hope that we would take a look at this issue when it gets summertime and it gets fast. Talk to some of the other neighbors. Send a questionnaire out to the neighborhood. You do that when you say, "Is there going to be a subdivision in the neighborhood? Are you proven or disapproving?" Ask them what they think are going on around the crescent where they live. You don't live out there. Everybody can tell a different story from where they live on the crescent. I can tell you what it's like at this end of the crescent, but go down four more driveways, and they're probably going an extra 50, 60 kilometers an hour faster than what they're going when they pass mine. All I'm saying is, is that this is a huge issue, and I don't want to have to come back before council and say, "I told you so," when somebody dies.
So you would like to have it re-surveyed in the summer?
Oh, for sure.
And does it need signage up there?
We, they did put 250-kilometer-hour signs in two separate sections. Nothing in front of my house, because then they get too many signs out there, they say, but there is two of them there now that weren't there after I started fighting for it. But when I have to start bringing up my kid's issue and signs going up within 12 hours to get stuff done, I don't want to do that stuff.
So at minimum, you want to see a re-survey?
See some traffic enforcement by the bylaws or the CVSE weighing some of these trucks coming out of there. The bylaws state shortest route in, shortest route out. That's not taking place. It's the shortest round trip for the trucks, like it was 25, 30 years ago at a McDonald Cedar, but it's not the bylaw.
Thank you. Councillor Kuntz?
Yeah, thank you for coming. Is my, okay. So what would you suggest is a good, would it, would give us a good sample of the kind of traffic that you're talking about? I mean, obviously, they did this in January, so maybe it's not the height, so would it be, and are we talking cranberry season? And what was the response from Mr. Martini to your request?
I never did hear back from Mr. Martini. I did talk to Mrs. Martini, and she said that she would get Ron to call me, but to no avail. But it's not just the truck traffic. The trucks aren't speed. They're not the issue when it comes to the speeding. It's the vehicles, the motorcycles, the cars that are using the road when it comes to speed. My issue with the trucks is, because of the four 90-degree corners they must go through to get down to from this end, they're trucks, they have to come up to the corner of Allard McKinnon to take all four lanes of a blind corner to get around it. Three trailers have gone in the ditch at that corner because they've had to cut back into the right-hand turn, right lane where they're turning into, and their trailer then off-tracks into the ditch against a hydro pole. So the trucks are one issue, speed and enforcement, and maybe by the CVSE. Everybody passed the buck to me. Bylaws says, "Go talk to CVSE." CVSE says RCMP. RCMP says bylaws. And everybody thought I'd go away, but guess what? I'm still here.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. That's all the questions.
Thank you.
All right, the next delegation is Jessica Yaniv. Let's go forward.
So, good evening, your worship and councillors. So tonight I'm here for a different type of delegation.
Your name, your name for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Jessica Yaniv. I'm running for Miss British Columbia, and I'm also Miss Anderson A1 Auto House as well. I'm for Walnut Grove, but today I'm here to ask for a donation to Cops for Cancer. The Miss BC pageant is a pageant that has been running in Fort Langley for about 18 years now, from what I recall, and I just want to talk, let's say, you know, just show, show the charity that I'm raising a lot of funds for. So I'm just going to pull this up here.
This fall, like every fall, a team of cops and paramedics will ride through our communities. They'll visit us at our schools and at our businesses. They'll speak at our events and spend time with our kids, and they'll do it all to help children with cancer. For almost two weeks, they'll travel over 1,000 kilometers on challenging terrain and through unpredictable weather in the Canadian Cancer Society's Cops for Cancer tours. And when they ride through our community, we'll be there to cheer them on. We'll shave our heads, host events, and do almost anything to raise money, help spread the message, and show support for our local cancer survivors and players. Then we'll feed them, thank them for their hard work, and send them on their way to the next community, and the money we raise together will go to important childhood cancer research and amazing support programs like Camp Good Times. This year, we'll show the Cops for Cancer that we appreciate what they're doing and let them know the enormous difference they make in the lives of children fighting cancer. Join your community to fight back against childhood cancers by supporting a rider, hosting an event, or making a donation. Fundraising events can start now, so get planning. Visit copsforcancerbc.ca to learn more.
So that's a little summary, but just to really summarize, the Cops for Cancer is a program launched in partnership between first responders across the country and the Canadian Cancer Society to support children and families affected by childhood cancer. The inception of this program began with one police officer and has been growing rapidly amongst communities across Canada. Since 1997, the program has raised over $42 million, with Miss BC raising $340,000 to fund life-saving pediatric cancer research and support programs. As one of the largest funders of pediatric cancer research in Canada, it has contributed to pediatric cancer survival rates, which have increased from 71% in the 1980s to over 83% today. So I want to talk a little about why I'm running here, because it's really important for society to take a stand against hate. And from what I've heard, I am the first person from the LGBTQ community to join the Miss BC pageant, which is huge. But basically, I see discrimination happening both towards myself, being part of the LGBTQ community and cultures and committing on a daily basis, and it's disheartening, it crushes me. So what I want to say, you know, if marginalized individuals continue to be scared to speak up and put a stand to hate, we will get nowhere as a society, and that's why I've been doing all these delegations, especially. So I'm here to ask council for a $10,000 donation towards Cops for Cancer to really show that the township of Langley cares for the LGBTQ community, cares for the kids, and really help Cops for Cancer to end, you know, find a cure, essentially, for cancer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next delegation is Mr. Brent Hill.
I'm not sure what I have to do to get that to move. Oh, that's a... There you go. Hello, everyone. My name is Brent Hill. I live at 20584 Eightieth Avenue in Langley. Myself and my partner, we run a business called Hot Dog Hill. It's a mobile food vending unit. I recognized some of you last year from the LEC, the Summer Concert Series. We were there for just about all of the events. Thank you very much for your support. I know a few of you certainly purchased some hot dogs and smokies, and I thank you. Last year, I moved from Surrey to Langley, and when I did, I came to the licensing department to apply for a business license, a home-based business license for my spot, but I was told at the time that mobile food vending is not allowed in the township of Langley. Now, it does exist in the township of Langley, but apparently it's not allowed in the township of Langley. I have Food Safe, I have Fraser Health approval, I have approval from fire departments for my carts, and I have liability insurance that I carry with me wherever I go. When we do an event such as at the LEC last year, those are all covered by the business license of the organizer of the events, which is very common. My business, typically, I don't do a lot of events. I do school lunches, I do business lunches, horse shows, car shows, those types of smaller events, not necessarily the big events. So I work in a little different area of what mobile food vending typically covers. Setting up in front of businesses, I only set up in front of businesses that want me there. They ask me to be there. We provide a value-added service for their business. When you see Costco and every other Costco like it with a food court in front of it, there's a reason. The customers stay longer, they have a better shopping experience. I help provide that for businesses around. You know, following the rules, getting permission, as we do, keeping a particular distance away from any other competing businesses so that we don't actually affect their business, we follow all of those rules. When I actually asked to come here and speak in front of here is because I was having difficulties, say, getting licensed, but I'm happy to say that that process has changed. By speaking with your licensing department, they've actually been working with me so that I can get licensed, so that I can continue doing business, which I've done for over 20 years, in Surrey and Langley and other places around. So I'm not really here to complain about anything, but since things have changed, since I put my application in, I thought I would just say that the township, you know, has thankfully worked with me, and I thank them. You know, the licensing department has went out of their way to help accommodate my business. So I'm happy to say that.
Well, it's awesome to hear.
That's it, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next delegation is Tanya Kerr, New Westminster and District Labor Council.
Hi there, I'm Tanya Kerr, and I'm a vice president of the Langley Teachers Association. I'm also a delegate of the New West End District Labor Council, a union member and a worker. Each year, the New West End District Labor Council presents to city councils and school boards within our region to seek your support and recognition of April 28th, the Day of Mourning for workers killed and injured on the job. We believe that workplace health and safety is everyone's responsibility. The purpose of the Day of Mourning is twofold, to remember workers killed and injured on the job, and to rededicate ourselves to preventing future injuries through education. The impacts of workplace death and injury are felt by our families, our friends, and our communities, but when we all work together, we can ensure every worker goes home safe at the end of the day. Education is key to prevention, and unions are leading the way. The B.C. Federation of Labor's Health and Safety Center is a center of excellence for occupational health and safety training and education. The center's programming is open to everyone, regardless of their current work status, including students and employers. The center has helped thousands of workers, organizations, and companies know their rights and their responsibility for workplace safety. This is especially critical for young or new immigrant workers who may not know all their rights, including the rights to refuse dangerous work. Young worker committees in many of our unions are on the forefront of education and raising awareness about workplace health and safety. Through the Federation's Alive After Five program, trained young workers speak to students in B.C. schools about health and safety and their rights as workers. Every year, the B.C. Federation of Labor Young Worker Committee organizes a sit-in on the anniversary of the 2005 death of Grant Depati, a young worker who lost his life in a gas and dash in Maple Ridge. This tragedy resulted in strong regulation being enacted around working alone and at night, but unfortunately, those laws have since been weakened at the requests of employers, and the sit-ins remind people just how vulnerable young workers are and the true cost of not protecting them. We also work with partners in the community on workplace health and safety. The B.C. Labor Heritage Society partners with Unions and WorkSafe B.C. on their Day of Mourning B.C. Schools project. They provide resources for schools for the Day of Mourning with a specific goal of reducing the number of deaths and injuries among young workers through education. This is critical, as young workers are the most vulnerable and statistically the most likely to be injured at work. Union members also advocate for legislation and regulations that are strong enough to protect all workers in B.C. In addition to making submissions on the Employment Standards Act consultations this year, our labor council voted at our February 27th meeting to support the recommendations of First Call, B.C. Child and Youth Advocacy Coalition, on strengthening the Employment Standards Act. When the act was changed in 2003, B.C. became the only province that does not place legal restriction on the occupation's task or time of day a child can work. Every single year in the past decade, over 2,000 children under the age of 15 claimed work-related healthcare costs, and WorkSafe B.C. paid out over $5 million in injury claims. Some of these injuries are life-altering for both the child and their family. First Call's recommendations will also ensure that we meet Canada's 2016 International Labor Organization Convention 138 commitments, which include setting the minimum work age at 16 years. On this Day of Mourning, the Canadian Labor Congress is uniting more than 3 million workers across Canada under this banner, "One is Too Many, No One Should Die on the Job." The labor movement's focus this year is clear and direct. Workplace deaths are fundamentally preventable, yet workers continue to be injured and killed on the job. It must stop. In 2017, 158 workers in B.C. died from work-related injury or illness, and there were 152,912 injuries reported. By working together, we can ensure that all workers stay safe and our communities are healthy and strong. Local government support for the Day of Mourning is an important building block of this work. Everyone here today can help us make a difference, be safety-conscious, support accountability measures in health and safety education in your workplaces. Have you seen in our slides, union workers and members, government leaders, employers gathered together April 28th to mark this important day for workers? I invite you to join us on Sunday, April 28th, at 11:00 a.m. at Pier Park in New Westminster to commemorate the Day of Mourning for workers killed and injured on the job. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to bylaws for first and second reading. F1 is resounding application number 100530 and development perimeter application number 101083, Castle Hill Homes, and bylaw number 5450. Could I have a motion, please? Councillor Ferguson, second. Second by councillor Whitmarsh. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on F1.
Press the button.
Yeah, could be a little quicker than that. All right, I got you back. Councillor Richter?
I note that there are 147 significant trees on the subject site, but it doesn't say if any are going to be retained. It's sort of implies that none of them are, but I wanted clarification from staff on that.
Mr. Saffey?
Thank you, your worship. There are two trees that are being protected, your worship, but the two trees are actually shared with the property to the north, so they straddle the property line, but there are two that are being protected.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Anderson?
Thank you. Councillor Richter asked about the trees, and so I won't ask about that. I did have two inquiries through, your worship, to staff. The first one is, there's a rendering on page seven, and I just want clarification because it does show something. I'm not the most experienced, but I saw something in there that indicated that there was something called a fire truck in an area. It says dead end there, so I'm assuming that it's all vetted to make sure that there's adequate access and exit for service vehicles as well as emergency vehicles coming through there when it says that in the report.
That's correct, your worship.
Thank you. And my secondary question, actually, I thought it might be a typo, but I just wanted to check and make sure. So on page nine, Building 8 refers to units that are, it says 13 feet wide. Is that actually the correct number? Because it calls it a tandem unit, and so that led me to... Because it calls it a tandem unit and so that led me to question, which I never had before, what is the limits to how narrow a townhome or any dwelling can be in the township of Langley?
Mr. Seifi, are there any restrictions on, on the width of townhomes?
Your worship, it depends on the zone. For single-family dwellings, we do have requirements in the zoning bylaw. However, in the townhouse-type developments, it's really a practical matter for, for architects and designer professionals, design professionals, to determine what's an appropriate size, width, that can accommodate the, the uses and the needs of a, of a family and that can be marketable. The section that Counsel Arneson refers to in the report is a direct quote from the proponents. So if there is an error, it would be on the proponents' part, yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you. It did strike me that, that was rather narrow and it did raise that issue in my mind about what the actual minimum was. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Seifi.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I just had a question through your worship to staff on clarification around parking. On page 10, when it talks about parking, it talks about the 32 double-wide units which equaled, would require 64 spots, but there's actually 70, which I understand is six, six of them have an outdoor, looks like an outdoor parking spot parked in behind the double. And I was wondering as well, I guess I wanted confirmation that's what it meant, but also what makes a parking spot adaptable? It says that only two of them are adaptable. I'm just wondering what makes a parking spot adaptable?
Your worship, the size of the stall is what makes it adaptable. They are sized to accommodate handicap parking, disabled parking, and they are associated with it at adaptable units that are required for multifamily developments.
Okay, so would those be the units that are, I'm just looking at this drawing, I guess on, just along 204th Street here, on the, the bottom row, I guess Building Eight, it looks like, the top and the bottom, is that what those units are? Those ones are the ones that I know have parking available outside of their units as well as the two double parking spots?
Your worship, I'm afraid I can't answer that. That's too detailed then.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, see no further discussion, I'll call the question on F1. And it carries with Counsel Richter and Counsel Arneson opposed. And we move on to F2, and this is official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100179, development permit application number 100903, development variance permit application number 100103, bylaw 5426 and 5461, Qualico Developments. Could I have Counsel Long move second there? Counsel Ferguson, discussion? Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I note in the report that there are 233 significant trees on the subject site. One is proposed to be retained on-site and an, and an additional three trees in the adjacent greenway. Why couldn't more trees be saved?
Mr. Seifi, do you have any?
Your worship, the naval plan and the bylaw require roads and services as well as a certain mix of residential units. So that is essentially a bylaw requirement and an entitlement in accordance with the naval plan. The subject on development servicing bylaw, as council is aware, does provide for replacement of trees. The proponents do go through an exercise with staff, with their architects and landscape architects and arborists to try and maximize the number of trees that can be protected. But again, based on the, the yield that is provided for in the naval plan and the zoning requirements and the servicing requirements, it's sometimes not possible to retain more trees, hence the requirement in the bylaw for replacement of trees.
Thank you. Counsel Davis.
Yes, thank you. This is just going through the public hearing, but I just noticed that there's an awful lot of surveys on Pocket Park Needs to Be Decided and I just wonder, is the Pocket Park, Park here, it doesn't show where it's going to be. Is that something that should be done before or should we wait to hear where the people think it should be?
Mr. Seifi, could you provide some comments on the Pocket Park?
Yes, your worship, that's a requirement of the plan, but having said that, there is a mechanism for all developments within the naval plan area to contribute towards acquisition of the Pocket Park as well as all the greenways. So at some point, and I guess sooner rather than later, the township as well as the development committee will have to put our minds to acquisition of an appropriate, which I think is one acre, approximately one acre site for the implementation of the Pocket Park.
But, okay, but the greenways shouldn't, like, if this goes to public hearing, the greenway, it says here they're supposed to have greenways also, but, you know, if it goes to public hearing, this project will, if voted, shouldn't the greenways kind of be put in there bef, like, before the?
So if you look at the?
So the greenways are, your worship, the greenways are, as you, as you can see on the slide, however, the Pocket Park is not. That's a matter for council to, to determine if it's appropriate or not.
Well, the green, the green box, rectangular box on the bottom is the greenway, which is the greenway for that property. The neighboring properties will have to provide their dedication for greenways when they come for development.
Okay, so, but the, but the Pocket Park, I guess?
Is more of a park that all of the developments in the area will contribute towards and will be purchased.
When, like, if we keep doing this, we won't have an opportunity to put a Pocket Park in. I mean, I just, okay, I, I'd like to see it go to, to, go to public hearing, so that's, I'm gonna vote, just to get it to public hearing and then we'll take it from there.
Thank you. Okay, no, see no further discussion, I'll call the question on F2. Yeah, we're voting. And it carries with Counsel Richter and Counsel Arneson opposed. And move on to F3, official community plan amendment and rezoning application number 100158 and development permit application numbers 100967, 101079, 101097. Looks like I'm dyslexic there. And Poli Cole, this is seven, this is bylaw 5465 and 5466. And a motion, please. Counsel Arneson, second. Counsel Kuntz, Counsel Richter.
Yeah, I wanted to ask about the trees on this property as well. I note in the report that there are 420 significant trees and none are proposed for retention. So that brings a total for tonight's three motions to 800 trees gone out of Willoughby. And I'm just wondering that staff have a note here that a restrictive covenant prohibiting clearing is going to be put in place. And I'm wondering why and how long is this restrictive covenant going to be in place?
Mr. Seifi.
Your worship, the proposal consists of different types of, of residential developments, some of which require a development permit, which your proponents are not proceeding with at this point. So those segments that are subject to a future development permit by council, however, part of the current rezoning and community plan amendment are the ones that are subject to the restrictive covenant.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I'm just, my, my question is around the roads through this particular design and then just, you know, picking up on it now, I didn't notice it earlier, but on 75A Avenue, or sorry, 75th Avenue, it's, the road is a 20-meter width and, and as we move into this, the houses here in this, in these lots, it moves into 18 and a half meters as well as 18 and a half around and it, is it not the case where if, if we have a 20-meter wide road, that there is the possibility of parking on both sides of the road, whereas if an 18 and a half meter, we would be, we would limit ourselves? Is that, is that correct?
Your worship, the, both 18.6, I believe it's 18.6 and not 18.5, however, 18.5 or 18.6 and 20, both of those standards provide for parking on both sides.
Okay, so I'm, I'm wondering, is, is there a reason why 75th Avenue couldn't just stay at 20 meters across as opposed to narrowing it? I can appreciate maybe 201A and 201B maybe being 18.6. I'm wondering why we would have to partway along the road, just narrow it down. It seems to me that it would make sense just to keep it at 20. I recognize that has an impact on lots, but anyway, that's something that I would prefer.
Okay, thank you. See no further discussion, I'm gonna call the question on F3. And it carries with Counsel Richter opposed. And move on to bylaws for first, second and third reading. G1 is development cost charge waiver for supportive housing. Bylaw number 5462. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Kuntz, second by Counsel Davis. Discussion on G1. Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, I think, I think we're all, we're all in favor of the, the core objective here, which was for the, the new Langley hospice facility not to be subject to these additional fees. But I've, I've been wondering, I wanted to have a question back to staff. I mean, I read the bylaw through and, and rather than create another bylaw, I wanted to clarify that by doing this, we're no longer consistent with Metro Vancouver's definition of supportive housing, which I read in some of the, some of the history, was, was the intent of some earlier modifications of the bylaw and that, that when by doing this, we're no longer consistent, sort of lost that objective where maybe we could reconsider this in terms of concept and simply just pay the DCC bill, which essentially is paying it to ourselves and then we can leave our bylaws the way they are. And I just, before we move ahead with this, I wanted to, to ask one last time about that possibility.
Your worship, Counsel Woodward is absolutely correct. The current bylaw was structured intentionally to be consistent with the Metro Vancouver regulations and should this current bylaw in front of council tonight pass, that would make our bylaw inconsistent slightly with the Metro Vancouver Regional DCC waiver bylaw.
Yeah, so, you know, I think we'll wait to hear if there's any other speakers, if there's anything else to add to that from staff's perspective. I think that, that I would like to at least float the idea, but not make the motion at this point, that, that maybe we just leave our bylaws the way we are and essentially pay money from ourselves to ourselves, from one program to another, and we could potentially just simply pre-approve that from prior year surplus in the 2020 budget, but I'll just leave it there for now. If there's other speakers, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Long.
Well, thanks. And I appreciate these comments because I've, I've never liked the word DCC waiver because, you know, development cost charges are a real expense when you build any facility or have anything constructed in the township. There are servicing requirements and, and there's a tax on, on roads and, and our infrastructure. So I would prefer to see the word grant or something like that applied, so where we would, certain projects would qualify for a grant in lieu of or something like that. So I'm not sure where it'll go, but I certainly don't like, I, I just prefer if the language was changed because really, we can't be waiving it because the services are required, right? So it's better off to give a grant, I think. I think the wording's better and I think it's more constructive. Thank you. Counsel Ferguson?
I too share a same uncomfortability as my colleagues. I did want to ask a quick question, if I may, through the chair to staff. Would this put us as the only community in, in metro that is significantly different than others, if I may?
Your worship, I, I wouldn't say significant, but it would be different. And as far as we know, we are the only one that has, has suggested the, the proposal or the amendment that is being considered by council.
Thank you, Mr. Seifi. I think that's one of the things that keeps coming up is we're, some of us are uncomfortable with the fact that we've gone into a territory where the only ones do, at least progressing at this point in time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So I would say, you know, I prefer that, that we have a bylaw. Sure, there may be only one hospice being built now, maybe in the future, there's another one being built and this bylaw would be there for them. A grant, you know, we have, we have a lot of organizations come to us asking for grants to waive their, or to cover their, not a lot, but there's, there's been occasionally ones that have come to have their DCCs paid for by the township, but having a bylaw that council has approved, I, I think is a very clear line on what should be part of this waiver and, you know, what, or what type of developments should not be part of that, this waiver. And this is very clear. It's affordable, it's a type of affordable and supportive housing. And I think being, as Counsel Ferguson says, maybe we are alone, but I think we're leaders in this. And I certainly would like to see it codified in a bylaw rather than a grant, which depends on what council is the day, that day, what their mood is, whether they're gonna give a grant to one organization or another. This is very clear on what type of housing would apply, would qualify for a waiver and it's not a grant, it's a waiver, so no funds are expended. So I would hope that this would pass in its same form and has the same effect, but it's codified. If, you know, 20 years from now, we need another hospice or they expand, at least it's there and we've done something in the future for this type of housing. Whereas a grant, then it has to be discussed each time by council and where one organization gets a grant and one doesn't get the grant. So those are my comments. Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, and I think that that was some of the original rationale for, for drafting the bylaw. I'm just, I think, you know, we're, we're essentially drafting a bylaw for a grant. You know, and then there's maybe someone down the road, maybe someone then will do this, maybe someone will do that. I think, you know, if there's a chance to not create yet another bylaw, I mean, maybe we should take that chance. We create a lot of rules and a lot of bylaws and then maybe it's great to not, maybe just one day not create another one. And we still get to the same objective that essentially we're paying money to ourselves, moving it from, from one fund to the other. So I don't know if this, I can't remember, this hasn't been moved yet, is it?
It's on the table.
It's on the table. So I'd like to, to make a motion that we, I'm not sure how to do this, I guess we'd have to defeat it, knowing that I would make a motion that we would pre-approve it from the 2020 budget. So I would ask council not to support this and not me to make the motion to simply pay for it at a 2020 budget and maybe one, you know, once for once, not create another bylaw.
Okay, thank you. And again, I reiterate, I think a bylaw is, is much more sure in a way of doing things than a grant, which, the way I've seen grants come and go on this table, it depends on the mood of the council and this, I think, is something that is a good thing. So I will be supporting it. So with that, I'll call the question on G1. And the motion carries with Counsel Ferguson, Counsel Richter, Counsel Woodward, Counsel Long opposed. Okay, we move on to G2, the 2019 church permissive tax exemption, subending bylaws, bylaw number 5464. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Kuntz, second. Counsel Whitmarsh, discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question on G2. Carries unanimously. Move on to G3, this is Langley Fees and Charges bylaw amendment, bylaw number 5469. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel Whitmarsh, second. Counsel Kuntz, discussion? G3. Okay, Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I guess I'm trying to play Solomon here and I'm wondering if through your worship to staff, if there had been a consideration for a graduated increase in the fees, so that would be 25% in 2020 and 50% in 2021 in order to balance the interests. So it would address some cost recovery, but also public expectation. So that was just my thought if that was considered as an option.
Mr. Beck.
Worship, some consideration was given and while the percentage change for the, the recreation facility in question could be deemed significant, the nominal dollar value is somewhat less, so it becomes a, a challenge. Just to refresh council's memory on this, this is the user fees and charges bylaw, the amendment, and that has several sections to it. The one we wanted to highlight for council's clarification was the, the water park and the options contained therein. That's the one where we're wrestling with the success of the facility. As you're aware, the facility has been highly successful and our present pricing structure is such that the more successful it is, the greater support it needs from a, from a subsidy point of view. If we are to keep that facility operating within the same lines of other facilities, we are expressing a concern to council that, that we think we should be addressing the rates because it's quite a unique service that's provided and we're certainly open to any direction or guidance council can, can provide in terms of what they think is best from a policy perspective. Our concern is going forward, that its continued success may, may mean it's a bit of a standalone in terms of its overall cost, which is acceptable if that's the will of council, but it is something that we wanted to bring to your attention so you could deliberate upon it and determine what's appropriate. We've also looked at other differential pricing mechanisms such as outside of community and the costs associated with that. We've looked at changing some of the hours or changing some of the other parameters, trying to do so. And there are some, always some improvements that can be made as we start to get more in tune with the facility, but we just think its success is gonna be something that's, well, fantastic is. But we just think its success is gonna be something that's, well, fantastic is gonna lead to different challenges for us economically.
So, Mr. Backen, the motion that we have on the table covers all of, all the fee increases. I think the point of discussion is for the Otter Co-op Outdoor Experience fee increase as a separate standalone. So would it be advisable to have an amendment so that we choose option one, two, or three, or to leave it as is, or deal with it separately and divide?
The amendment could simply be to change it from where it is right now. The bylaw is suggesting, let's just go to some real, some real numbers. The bylaw is suggesting a increase from, if I have this correct, from, for example, for the adult rate from, let's see, from six to nine dollars for the drop-in session. I use that as the example.
So which option?
Oh, that, those are, so in the report, that's just one I've chosen. There's actually for child, youth, student, adult, and seniors. And it shows the original rates. I'm, I'm now referring to page five on G three. It shows the original rates and then it shows the revised rates for the, that are proposed. So that option is what's built into the, the bylaw at this point. Council could simply determine status quo, option one or option three as being the amendment.
Okay. So with that, that would just require an amendment. So if there's a member of council that wishes to make an amendment, we at least have something to start on. Staff have given us these options. In the bylaw, it's status quo, is that? No, it's, we still need to pick an option.
It's option two.
Option two is status quo?
No, option two's in the bylaw. It represents the increase, as I've outlined.
Okay. So, okay, just to be clear, what we moved includes option two?
Correct.
Okay, so if we want to change to option one or three, that would require an amendment?
Or status quo.
Or status quo. Okay, so, okay, so I'll see any hands. I've got a speakers list on this one, so we'll move forward. Counsel Woodward.
I wanted to raise one thing specifically. You look at the, look at the fee schedule that, that's in the report and nobody would, would do this. You've got one month at thirty-two forty-eight, then you've got forty-one thirty-eight, and sixty-five forty-eight, and forty-nine twenty-four, and one twenty-eight thirty-three. And I just wanted to ask through the, the question back to staff, whether that imposes any sort of burden, like I'm assuming most people are paying by debit, but those people that are paying by cash, does this kind of, you know, pricing structure where everything is to the penny providing any sort of burden, that if we just direct you to round these off to more rational numbers, that maybe that would provide some convenience on what these things cost?
You're, you're quite right. As I understand it, we're dealing here with the actual numbers that would be reflected in a
In the increase if it's approved here.
But in a debit card or that situation.
Yeah.
If we're dealing with cash, like it would be some rounding, of course, of course, there's no, no pennies, so we'd be using the nickels or the dimes.
There's really no, is there any real reason for us to do that? Or you're fine with the way, generally, you're fine with the way it is?
The, the reason why it was done this way was to represent the percentages that we've been discussing. So quite often, if in another context, we'll be using the cost of living increases that are in place. So we're in tune with that. So when we see these numbers that are down to the nickel or the dime, it's, it's just part of our usual process.
All right, well, somewhat amusing then, I'll just leave it at that. Okay, so the other thing though is I also wanted to raise the possibility, I'm not sure how I would like you to structure this, but it was raised at the Recreation, Culture, and Parks Committee about the possibility of a, other municipalities to have a super senior category that if you're over, wouldn't be, wouldn't be sixty-five, Mr. Mayor. No, would not be sixty-five, Mr. Mayor. Potentially be seventy-five. And there was a, there was a grid presented and it was, it was discussed at the committee table. And I think it's a good idea and I'd like to, to look at proceeding with that. And then, but I don't know if you, we can do that as a separate thing to come back at a later date for a separate category so that it's revenue neutral, potentially, you know, tweak some other numbers and come back with revenue neutral for a super senior category of seventy-five plus that get a significant discount to use our facilities.
Your worship, there's a couple of ways it could be done. It certainly could be done later as a standalone, however, then it would have to be brought back as a subsequent bylaw amendment. If you had some, perhaps at the end of this debate, it might be prudent to make that as an amendment, because then we'd know which option we're talking about and then we could actually try to marry that up with some certain numbers that you may have some concept. To do now might overly complicate things, so my suggestion would be that we deal with the option selection and once that's resolved, then proceed with the extra category.
Okay, thanks.
Or it could be done for the next, next year and we can get some
Well, I wanted to do it this year, Mr. Mayor. I don't want to postpone it a year.
No, you can do whatever you want. I'm just saying, it could be done.
Thank you very much.
It could be done for next year. It gives staff time to.
Yeah, and I think that the idea was that we wouldn't try to do it here at the table, that, but we wouldn't, if fees aren't increasing till September, which is what I read, then potentially we could create this category in, in advance of those fee increases and have that ready for the fall.
Thanks. Counsel Whitmarsh.
Um, yeah, my, my question earlier on, maybe a couple of months ago, we had some comments around the, the family rate and, and the definition of family. And I noticed in, in this document, when it was, it was focused largely on the water, the Otter Co-op Outdoor Experience and, and water park and so on. And it said then there that there has been consideration to going to a flat rate per person for family as opposed to the current rate we have. And I'm wondering if there's, would be, if there were some decisions made around that or, I mean, I think this document shows that it's still listed as two adults and three children. I know that was a concern by many people in our community. Just wanted to get some feedback from the staff on their thoughts around that and, and why we have stayed with the current policy.
Mr. Backen.
Your worship, all those issues I, I think were considered and it's, well, relatively nominal numbers, a fairly complex task. The, the, the decision, I guess, that's been presented to you or the recommendations presented to you recognizes it's ultimately council's decision in terms of what the best model actually is. Why the numbers that Counsel Whitmarsh referenced was just the historical practice from the observations we'd seen, what it looked like would be the most workable and the most equitable going forward and, and maintaining that position. If council wishes to expand or, or elaborate in any of the categories, they certainly can do so.
Yeah, I guess, I, I guess my, my thinking was, I mean, I guess what the rationale is for having a, you know, a five-member family versus those that have larger families, it seems like they're, it seemed to, and I know we don't have that many larger families, but for larger families, it seemed like a, you know, they were unfairly maybe treated for having a larger family. And I'm just wondering the rationale for why we stayed at five and just stayed consistent with that.
Yep, so the, you're, you're quite correct. There are a number of considerations that would go into the, the analysis. I would guess, the best way to phrase it is that typically the five number you're referencing seems to be a good median number. What we do see is when we get to larger numbers, there's a declining number of families and then there's an increasing number of extended families where all of a sudden the family becomes a cousin, a relative of a distant sort that we're trying to cover. So there's a bit of a balance. The, the, the number that's there simply represents the observations that have been experienced and what we think is actually workable. But yes, it does cause, there is implications for the larger families. Having said that, however, if there is a situation where there's a large family, there is also the provision for some assistance if they can bring it forward to the attention of the site supervisor and they can establish their township residence. That always overrides any of our pricing strategies. So they actually have that if that's the situation. So if it's unfair and equitable or unaffordable, that's a fallback position that can be adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Long.
I'm, I'm fine, thanks.
Counsel Ferguson.
Yes, if I may, through the chair to staff. Now, this is predicated on, on all of our pools, if I may? Or is it just looking ACU?
It's predicated on all of our water parks, and there's one water park.
Okay, that's, that is a, a good question because I wanted to ask you, this is for all year, these prices, correct?
They come into effect in the, when the, when the park opens.
Yeah, but then it'll continue for the
It'll continue as fees and charges to lose their bylaw.
The reason why, because not, the water park's not open all year round.
Correct.
But you're still gonna have these prices all year round.
For the water park.
Just doing the water park.
Okay, just for the water from there. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much.
And Counsel Woodward.
Yeah, so in, I'll, I'll deal with the, we can, I'm not sure in what form we're gonna deal with the, the idea to come back with a separate category, separate from approving this. But also too, I wanted to, you know, that it's not, what's not included is reviewing some of the fee structure that, that staff are not recommending be changed. And I was a tad surprised, I had a, one meeting with staff last November regarding our current filming fee structure, and it was not included and had no recommendations for, for any increases. And I wanted to know how to revisit that within this process so that maybe that can come, we can approve this, we can come back with some, a separate report and maybe bylaw amendment or some sort of a, a way to increase some of the fees and review some of these fees which weren't automatically included in the report. So I want to give some examples, like so, so when you make a permit application just to film, there is a perception in the community that somehow township is benefiting from this. The permit fee to film in the township is a hundred dollars. And from what I've gathered and just some basic numbers, the quantity of filming permits we're doing versus the staff we have in order to process these filming permits, we're not in a cost recovery situation. But I'd like to have that confirmed for council's consideration to look at increasing some of these filming fees to get us at least a cost recovery. And, but how do I do that? Do you want me to do that under new business separately? Or can I do it here?
Your worship, the process would be up to the chair to whether it be done at this point or later on the meeting. As I'm understanding the, the question, that is, what's the most effective way to revisit the film revenues, which were about fifty thousand dollars last year?
And not, and not hold up this particular approval.
In this process. As there may be subsequent amendments, I think it could simply be done after disposition of this, this bylaw as a separate process. And that then simply means we may have to bring back a further bylaw amendment before, earlier than we anticipated, but that if it's down to one or two issues is not a large, a large task.
Yeah, and then maybe, I'm not sure in the future how to get some, because, you know, these people are just making, they're not recommending any fee changes, so it's not included in the report, meaning that council doesn't have the information. And so it sort of prevents us from dealing with it at the table.
In those situations, you're quite right, it'd be appropriate then to have a further analysis done, a deeper dive done into it to explore it, because as we saw in some of the preliminary communications, there's pros and cons to it, but it would take some time to, to elaborate upon and that should be done.
So if, if, if the chair would certainly, we could certainly deal with the current motion, but then if I could do, make two, two now rather than wait for new business regarding a super senior category and revisiting filming fees. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on G three? I'll call a question. Okay, carries unanimously. And so we're going to go to Counsel Woodward. And so you can, I think super senior should be
Yeah, like, well, I'd like to just make it really simple for staff to come back with a recommendation on how to create a revenue neutral super senior category for seniors aged seventy-five and above for a significant discount for
If I could, might just add, just to leave the age out, because there may be, I don't know exactly what super senior means, seventy-five.
Well, from the grid that was presented to the committee, there is quite a range of definitions that some municipalities are doing. And we're actually one of the only few that, there's many, many municipalities that have this, so we're not breaking new ground here. But if you'd like, I'd be happy to word it however you like, Mr.
Yeah, just to see, just to get report, the report back to give us the range too, so we're all aware of what the range is and reasons for it. So there's Do you want to do, do you want to do two motions? You want to just add, he can, he can add on to this.
I'd like to keep the filming one separate, perhaps potentially people would just division.
Is there a second or two?
Counsel Long.
Yep, and so any discussion on that? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Yeah, we're all gonna be there sooner than later. Carries unanimously. And Counsel Woodward, push you on again.
Oh, thank you, Mr.
There we are.
Okay, so how do you let me to word that, maybe, Mr. Mayor, or to staff in terms of revisiting or getting some sort of an update with some recommendations on making us at least revenue neutral for filming revenue?
So your worship, I think that's effectively it, that staff be asked to review and provide an analysis and recommendation in regards to filming revenue and ensuring that it's cost neutral to the township.
And maybe even make a little bit of a profit. That wouldn't be such a bad thing, would it necessarily?
So to be cost neutral but cover our overhead costs?
Yes.
Maybe twenty-five percent like Surrey or something like that.
Can you second her? Counsel Kuntz, discussion. Seeing none, I'll call a question. Carries unanimously. All right, we go to bylaws for consideration, third reading. H one is rezoning application number one zero zero five three five and development permit application one zero one zero one four. Yorkson Medical, bylaw number five four four seven. Counsel Davis, seconder. Counsel Kuntz, discussion on each one. Seeing none, call a question. Carries unanimously. Move on to H two. This is official community plan amendment, rezoning application number one zero zero one one five. Development permit application, okay, sorry. Counsel Ferguson declares a conflict. Number one zero zero seven six eight, BD Development Group, bylaw five four four four, bylaw five four four five. Can I have a motion, please? Counsel Long, second. Have a second there. Counsel Whitmarsh. And Counsel Arneson.
Uh, thank you, worship. Yes, I'm going to move a motion to include as a condition of the granting to the subject development permit and rezoning, the contribution by the BD Corporation to the township of Langley, zero point five acres of land adjacent to the north and east property lines of the Henry Leaf Heritage House, thereby creating a lot line adjustment in favor of the township and to the benefit of the historically significant Henry Leaf House.
Amendment, second, amendment, second by Counsel Richter, discussion. Seeing none. I'll call the question on On the amendment. It carries unanimously. So now we're back to the main motion as amended. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call a question. Carries unanimously. And ask Counsel Ferguson to please come back. Okay, now we move on to bylaws for final adoption. This is Langley, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-three, five-year financial plan bylaw and development cost charge reserve fund expenditure bylaw, bylaw number five four five five, five four five six. Can I have a motion, please? Counsel Arneson, second by Counsel Davis. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call a question on I one. Carries unanimously. Move on to I two and its user pay utility rate bylaws for twenty nineteen. Bylaw five four five, five four five seven, five four five eight, five four five nine. Can I have a motion, please? Counsel Kuntz, and second. Counsel Davis, discussion. Seeing none, I'll call a question on I two. Carries unanimously. Move on to I three. This is rezoning application number one zero zero four seven five. Township of Langley, two six three one six thirty eighth Avenue, bylaw five two seven eight. Can I have a motion, please? Counsel Davis, second by Counsel Arneson. Discussion on I three. Seeing none, I'll call a question. Carries unanimously. Move on to I four. This is Murrayville Community Plan Amendment and rezoning application number one zero zero one four eight. And heritage alteration permit application number one zero zero eight nine three. This is Landstone Homes at two one eight one two forty-eighth Avenue, bylaw five three five one, five three five two, and five three five three. Can I have a motion, please? Counsel Kuntz, and second. Counsel Long, discussion on I four. Seeing none, call a question. It carries unanimously. And move on to I five. This is official community plan amendment and rezoning application number one zero zero one six nine. Brewery lounge endorsement application number zero 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 four zero. Jackpot Properties, bylaw five four three one, five four three two, five four three three three. Councillor Ferguson moves it, seconder, councillor Whitmarsh. Discussion. Seeing none, call a question. Carries unanimously. And it takes us now to the mayor and council report.
Your worship, there was a DP, I believe, with a.
A DP, is there a DP? Sorry. Which one?
Brewery endorsement, sorry.
Brewery endorsement, oh, the brewery endorsement, separate motion. Could I have a motion, please? Counsel that we endorse. Councillor Ferguson moves it, seconder. Councillor Davis, discussion, seeing none. Call a question. Carries unanimously. Now we move on to the mayor and council report. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back from spring break. Had some great weather over spring break, it was nice to see after our cold miserable February. There are a few events to tell you about which took place over the past couple of weeks. On Thursday, March fourteenth, was the official opening of the Langley Arts Council's office in Alder Grove. The Langley Arts Council has been part of our community for fifty years, and it's wonderful to see them starting their next chapter at the Alder Grove Kensington Community Centre. And there I am, trying my hand at art, probably the first and last time, because I'm not very good. But I am painting a tree, councillor Richter. Yeah, that was a good, trying to do my part. The Greater Langley Chamber of Commerce held its monthly meeting on Tuesday, March nineteenth, where the topic was the benefit of apprenticeships for employers. I attended the Municipal Finance Authority twenty nineteen Financial Forum and Annual General Meeting on March twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and where I've been, I was asked to be a member of the Board of Trustees, and now I am a trustee on the Board of Trustees. And the MFA is the organization that loans money to municipalities throughout British Columbia. It's AAA rated, it's been around since nineteen seventy, and it's the only one in Canada. Only problem is it has that in Canada, so there are forty members appointed from all the regional districts and ten trustees. So I was honored to be appointed as a trustee for Metro Vancouver. So I'll do my best, Mr. Backen, to get some money for you, but can't promise you anything. Upcoming event, Thursday, April fourth, is a volunteer appreciation event, where the township honors all the volunteers in the township and with a great event at the Langley Event Centre. Council, councillor or acting mayor Whitmarsh, attended the following events. Wednesday, March thirteenth, was Langley Christian Elementary School Visit. And Thursday, March fourteenth, was the Fraser Valley Cultural Diversity Awards, and councillor Arneson also attended. And then we have.
Councillor Long was there, too.
Councillor Long, excellent. And Sunday, March twenty-fourth, is the annual BC Fire Museum Potluck Luncheon. And here we have councillor Ferguson. You're going to have to explain this one, councillor Ferguson.
Oh, yes, sir. Oh, yeah, thank you. Well, don't be fooled, you know, we have to protect our sewer systems, and I've said to anybody who listens, sewer is not sexy, but you know what's important? Don't flush certain things down. And they even gave us a free roll of toilet paper, you can actually flush this, but no dental floss, electronic items, feminine hygiene items, and paper towels, and a whole list of other things. If you go unflushables.ca, and there I am with two known non-culprits.
Excellent, thank you. Very appropriate for you. But it is very important, this costs Metro Vanco, what? I can't speak anymore. Metro Vancouver, a lot of money every year in maintaining our waste treatment plants, and certainly a message that we need to get out. So, does anybody have anything else to add? Councillor Davis.
Well, my wife took this picture, it was Earth Day, and this was Earth Hour, it was a Saturday night from eight-thirty to nine-thirty, they shut the lights off. And this picture didn't really take justice, there was, it was wild. Everyone got a little thing, and it was dark, and it was packed, and it was almost dangerous to be in this pool, because everyone was throwing the balls around that had the thing. But anyhow, I thought to myself, that was quite a pool party that night, so it was, but it was Earth Day, so they wanted to shut the lights off, but it was pretty wild.
Thank you. Is there anything else from council? Okay, so seeing none. We'll move on to other business. And councillor Woodward, let me just clear the queue here. Councillor Woodward, here.
I won't, I won't read the whole, the whole motion. It's just a fast-track applications for development applications that have arterial road frontage. So therefore be it resolved that staff hereby directed to process any and all development applications within the boundaries of the Willoughby Community Plan with unfinished road and sidewalk expansion on the arterial sections of two oh eight Street, Seventy-second Avenue, two hundred Street, eighty-sixth Avenue, Eightieth Avenue, and two oh two, two oh two A Street indefinitely with fast-track status to be reviewed and referred to council for consideration as soon as possible without delay until otherwise directed by council. If so, move.
Second by councillor.
So I think the wherewithal is, I can speak to a few of them. The general intent here is that, you know, right now, we have a, some situations where some of arterial road applications in Willoughby have a greater public interest to be, to be finished as soon as possible, over and above some other applications which, which don't have that. And so this is recognizing that we do have a, an arterial road problem in Willoughby, where it's in the greater public interest to, to complete applications more quickly as soon as possible that have that needed component, which is more important than, say, some other applications that don't. And we recently expanded our development processing capacity with four new positions, and we need to get our timelines down for all applications, but want to prioritize ones with arterial road frontage. And if we're determining that, that fast-tracking some is hurting others, I'd like to have us consider expanding those planning resources further to ensure that we don't do that. But I believe that this has a lot of merit, it's one small part of an overall plan that I'm currently working on and completing, that we need to get the, some of these arterial road gaps complete, and if we have an application that's going to complete part of it, that we do it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Ferguson.
Yeah, I just, I just want to know whether it'd be a friendly amendment to the mover, whether we could make two hundred and eighth Street some sort of a distinct priority with, I'm not taking away from some of the other things, but certainly applications sitting within the two oh eighth corridor that indeed could move, given a distinct priority, if the mover would consider that. And a friendly amendment I'm asking for.
I, I think, I'll, I'll let councillor Woodward speak to it if he wishes, but, you know, we've, I don't know if there's going to be that many, you know, like compared to the other streets. I think having them all there equally, they're all important, and two-eighths definitely, definitely is one that's of concern, but so are the other ones. So, you know, we've got priority for Alder Grove, we've got priority now for these, everything's going to be a priority, and they're all going to be filtered down in, in order, but I think it's already understood as a priority, so, but if councillor Woodward wishes to do that.
I just don't want to lose one of my rebuttal chances, too, sorry.
There's something you can find, well.
Just turn me on without losing one of my chances.
No, you won't, okay. So we'll go through the list and then, councillor Long? Oh, sorry. Yeah, councillor Ferguson, yeah.
One question, I don't know if I'll have a rebuttal. My question is, we still have a number of telephone poles blocking roads that could indeed be used. Any, any status on BC Hydro or to when they're going to remove them and put them in an appropriate position?
Mr. Steffey.
Your worship, that is something that staff is continuously working on and is unfortunately doesn't have a lot of control over, and it's not just BC Hydro, BC Tellus, what's that, BC Tellus is also, I guess, a culprit, if you will, in terms of not necessarily responding to our requests based on our timelines, but rather on their own.
Okay, because I think that's important as well. I know it's not part of the motion, but they'll say to build some roads, but if you can't get the telephone poles up, that's another challenge. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Long.
Well, I guess I just would like to ask staff if they're already kind of doing this. I mean, I, I can't see not supporting it, because of course it makes sense, but I mean, staff would already be looking, wouldn't they, at priority developments within the township? So if, if applications come forward on any of these streets, would there be some indication that they're not going to keep this priority? And maybe, maybe I'm just being, being goofy about it, but I just want to make sure that staff can say, hey, yeah, this is something that we already do, but this motion won't really hurt, because it's going to emphasize perhaps the, you know, the importance of getting these roads finished.
Your worship, staff wouldn't dare do anything without council direction in this regard. This is a very sensitive topic, and we deal with applications on a first come, first served basis.
Okay, and that, okay, so this opens it up for that very discussion, because if, what is the fairness? When you come to the counter and you put your application in, you say, oh, I'm sorry, you're on the wrong street, get to the back of the line, right?
Pretty much.
Yeah, well, that, that's troubling, but it's almost like you'd want to just get on the, you know, get on the, on a stool and say, hey, folks, get over here, if you've got property on here, let's, let's see you at the counter. And it's very difficult for me to say, well, you know, you have to have so many bucks, boxes ticked before our staff will deal with you. So it's a, it's a challenge, I'll have to think on this for a few seconds.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yes, this, this, I, I like the creativity of the idea, and, and I do think that this is an important part of our community. Certainly, conversation has been going around two oh eighth and what we should do with two oh eighth for a long time, and so I do appreciate the, the motion here by councillor Woodward to move in this direction. I do have a, a small concern with it, and that is that we, we have had conversation here, lots of conversation about Alder Grove, we talked about fast-tracking those development applications. We have had conversation at this table about fast-tracking affordable housing and rental types of, of applications as well, to try and create more affordable housing in our community. We've also had conversation at this table around fast-tracking projects that help seniors, particularly affordable housing projects for seniors. And we've also had conversation at this table around actually trying to improve the speed of all applications and the processing time for all applications, regardless of where those locations are or what purpose they serve. And so while I certainly appreciate the, the concern for Willoughby and, and two oh eighth Street, I, I guess I would like to see it part of the overall encompassing vision of where we're going, as opposed to, you know, every second or third meeting coming up with a new type of project to fast-track. If we keep going down this path, path, then virtually all of our projects will be fast-tracked, and we won't have any that'll be normal tracked, which then the normal track will become the fast-track, and the fast-track will become the normal track, and be right where we started. So I'd like to see us maybe have a process, and maybe we can do it quickly. I don't want to delay things, but I'd like to have something that talks all-encompassing, where we can, as a council, talk about what are the priority areas in our community, what are the primary locations that we think are most important for us to look at priority fast-tracking, whether that be a type of housing or whether that be a location. And Willoughby might very well be the top of the list, I'm not suggesting it wouldn't be, in fact, from what I can gather, it very well might, very well might be. But I'd just like to see us put it all together as some kind of discussion, where we can discuss it all together as opposed to one topic at a time. And so I'm not sure what the process would be, I certainly don't want to slow it down, but I'm not sure that I'm prepared tonight to vote for this, even though politically, sure, it sounds great, but I think there's a lot of other things we should address, and we can do it quickly, and what are our priorities, and put those on down, and have a good whole, fulsome whole discussion around priorities for Langley.
Thank you. Councillor Davis.
Thank you. I, you know, I, I sense the direction of the motion. It's going to the road problems, especially two oh eighth is on the top there, I'm not so sure it's the, it's the number one priority, but it is, it happens to capture A. When Gordon MacIntosh was here and we were doing meetings with him, he had, we had talked about downstairs how long it takes, and I know that it was brought up by staff, and I don't know how to say this, because it sounded like we were bragging, but we do a real good job, and a lot of people are going to argue with me because of the speed, but it wasn't just the speed, it was, we dotted our i's, crossed our t's, and we had, in the last ten or fifteen years, I forget exactly how, what it was, how, how, how efficient we were at doing it with the manpower, or the, the staff that we had. And I, I kind of share councillor Whitmarsh's thoughts about this. However, you know what? I'm wondering if maybe next week, if you bring another one or a week after about this, I'm wondering if maybe I can deal with them, but I think I'm going to support this, because I sense the direction it's going for, for two eighth, I've always, I mean, oh, it was four or five years ago, I think we, I thought of, can we entice the developers on those roads out somehow by giving some sort of incentive? And I don't know if, if with the, with the amount of money and all that that they do have in their, on those pieces of property, that if this is really going to be an incentive, but I think it's a step in the right direction. So for, for today, I'm going to support it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Long.
Yeah, well, you know, I don't think I know enough about it, and I'm troubled about how it creates an inequity. So I see that Richmond have some kind of a fast-tracked system, and maybe we could have staff analyze the, the motion and come back with some suggestions. I'd feel much more comfortable with that than, than just approving something at the council table, because it sounds like a good idea. You really have to put yourself in the position of, of a developer coming forward with all the multi-millions of dollars, or any, even any resident that have projects that they want to get underway and find out, well, we're kind of busy because we fast-tracked all these other ones. So in Richmond, for example, they have a procedure that you have to follow, it's, it's optional, and you have to pay extra fees and so forth. Your worship, could we not refer it to staff at least for a week or so, and, or till the next meeting, and come back with some recommendations or perhaps analysis of other municipalities that have used the system?
That's, that's up to, that's up to council.
That's my, that's my motion, to refer it to staff.
Okay, I'm going to go through the speaker's list, and we'll go back to that, okay? Councillor Ferguson.
I guess it wouldn't hurt to refer it and to get some more information. That's up to council. You know, it's, we earlier, we had a very, very thorough budget process this year. We went through every, nook and cranny of every line entry of that budget, and we came back, we had extra days, we met, and we went over, and we decided that maybe two oh eights wasn't, wasn't to, to be included in this year's budget, because we were going to strategize, which is good, it's good to strategize and come up with some other ideas. You need money to build roads, you need land to build roads, you need property access, you need a number of different things have to be in order to, to make that happen. Certainly, working with the landowners, and I imagine some are even in this room here, to come up with creative ideas, and it doesn't hurt to do things different or do things better, that doesn't hurt. There are nine members of council here, and I think I have to keep reminding everybody it's a majority of nine to make decisions, and I think that you can't say no to something like this, because, I mean, obviously, we need to improve our roads, we need to make a road safer and better, and they've been crying about two oh eight for years, it was a phenomenal job last council did by twinning that two oh eight street, that was an excellent job doing that, and now it's just got to continue moving it down, and as, as development comes, obviously, we will be, obviously, getting the widening for not just two oh eight, but for some of these other, other roads and more on, on our plate. So whatever council wants to do, but I think still important, you know, we've asked even earlier on today, we asked UDI and others to do a presentation from the development community, maybe they've got some ideas on, on not just roads, but housing and other things. So we're very active at council, trying to come up with some solutions and money and answers to these very difficult questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Hey, councillor Long, did you wish to do a referral?
Yes, I think so, just for a short time and for staff to come back with some more information for us to consider.
Is there a second there? Councillor Coontz, seconds. Discussion on referral. Councillor Woodward.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the referral could be structured a bit better than just to get some comments from staff. I mean, I think if there's some concerns about, you know, next week we're going to be fast-tracking this, and the week after that we're going to be fast-tracking that, I mean, those, I don't, I don't think those comments are really all that funny, I don't think they're really taking, taking the situation that's presented in this motion very seriously. We've fast-tracked one application in Alder Grove, and we're being equating it like there's, now there's two lineups and different tracks of this and different tracks of that. I think we've got a serious roads problem in Willoughby, and this is one small part of dealing with it. And I don't think if you don't support this, then to me, you don't support solving the problem in Willoughby. But I think there may be some rationality to, to explore the idea with staff a little quicker, if it can come back by the fifteenth, because our next meeting after that isn't for another month. And so my concern is we don't see this back until, till May, late May. And, you know, really, what, what we're trying to do is trying to say that, you know, five, six, seven applications are going to take priority over another forty or fifty, whatever the numbers are, maybe those, those numbers can come back then, if this is going to get referred away. But you can also approve this, and then we can review a fast-track policy that's more comprehensive, so that right away, some of these applications, if they're applicable, can start getting priority status. And then we can also potentially follow up separately on a council policy around fast-track for affordable housing projects, Alder Grove, and certain applications in Willoughby, which would then put us up to this concern that there's this fast-track creep. We can have a fast-track policy that if you fall into these three categories, potentially that can happen. But that can, that doesn't have to happen mutually exclusive to giving the current applications in-stream some priority in the next two, three months, while we maybe formalize a fast-track council policy document. So I, I would support a referral that was maybe more well-structured, or potentially look at doing it in parallel, which this referral doesn't allow. I mean, it's, it's just, it's funny to hear, like, well, it sounds like a great idea, but I can't vote for it. I mean, it's just, it's just kind of, just, I don't understand that, we can do both, certainly. We can support this motion and the intent of it, and then formalize it into a policy, as the motion was very clearly constructed, until otherwise directed by council. But in the next two, three months, while we formalize a fast-track policy, we can certainly support the intent of this and change it later on. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't support the referral.
Thank you. Councillor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I, I, I do think it's a good idea, and to say that if we don't vote for it tonight, then we don't support improvements in Willoughby is, is, is not really appropriate. It's, I, I'm very supportive, I am very happy to move down this direction, but I would like to see it in, in, in combination with all the other conversations that we've had. And we've had a lot of conversations around this and different kinds of projects that would be fast-tracked or moved faster, and so I just would like it to happen. I have not at all suggested we should slow it down, or we should take months and months to figure this out. So I am supportive of a referral to staff, maybe at the next council meeting, maybe that quickly, so we can have some kind of information of how that would work with fast-tracking and sort of some other kinds of ideas that they've heard us talk about, which is affordable housing and seniors and all applications improving the speed of that. I think that could come a little quicker. So I'm, I'm very supportive, I think everyone on council wants to improve things in Willoughby, I think everybody's very interested in seeing those things improve in Willoughby, and I just like to have all the information on the table before we make a decision. just like to have all the information on the table before we make a decision.
Council Ferguson?
I mean, I just, thank you. I was wondering if Council Woodward would be happier if we, obviously, there's a, there's a referral motion on the, on the table to, to have staff do a presentation, to go over the very things that are in this motion. I don't think there's a single counselor here that's against what you're doing, Council Woodward. I think if you say, what is the status of the applications to date, if they can provide that? What's the status of the road networks to, to date? What is the status of moving forward on potential ideas? What's the status of putting together? Now, we're putting the staff of moving forward with some of the things that you've outlined in this very motion. The motion's not dead. We're, would that help if we just had the, the staff come, do the presentation, and we can ask questions? Because I have asked a lot of questions tonight, and I've asked questions prior to preparing for the meeting. So would that help you? Because nobody here that I heard is against your actual motion or against what you're doing.
I think if I could.
So if that would help, I don't know.
If I could answer that, I think the staff are certainly taking notes and listening to the discussion, and they'll present back to council, I think, some.
And that was my only point, that nobody here is criticizing you for what you've done, or, and we appreciate what you've done. We just want to be able to get some answers here.
So we want to, so staff will come back with something, and Mr. Backen, I think you've heard the discussion, and they're clear in what we want to, we want to know basically, I think one of the things is what other municipalities are doing when it comes to fast-tracking, because it is happening in other municipalities, as has been mentioned, and also how it could relate to Township Langley. Mr. Backen?
And to confirm, your worship, that's effectively what we heard, that this is a referral to staff to review what other communities are doing in terms of priority processing and to report back to council. That just leads to the, if that's correct, that leads to the second question in terms of timeframe. If we're to make the 15th meeting because of deadlines for meetings and publication, that gives us about five working days, by my calculation, maybe six to have that done. Mr. Seffy, is that going to be workable?
Thank you for the opportunity, your worship. It is workable, but I guess I have to provide council with information in terms of the implications that essentially means setting aside projects that staff are currently working on, potentially including some of the ones highlighted as, as being, you know, required by council to be fast-tracked. I don't know if that's the case, but that could be the case. I guess the point being, it's going to take a staff person at least a couple of days, maybe more, to draft something for more senior staff to review and then have some discussion, perhaps do research, as indicated by council is part of the process that requires calling a few other municipalities, reviewing their, their processes and, and regulations, then perhaps speaking with a couple of developers, finding out their perspective, and reporting back to council. So that's going to take all of five or six days as Mr. Backen referenced, which means that other projects are going to have to be set aside.
Thank you. Well, this is important enough. You know, fast-tracking sounds good, it sounds glitchy, and other municipalities have done it, but there are other good developers who do have projects that they want to get fast-tracked too. So I think we have to tread carefully. We're setting a precedent here that, or a policy here that, that does have an impact. And before I could ever support it, I would want to hear some information. I think it's okay to slow it down, to get that information so council can make a good decision. Yeah, it sounds great politically, yeah, we're going to fix 208th, and we're going to fix it today, and anybody who wants to have a development, we're going to go and help them out as fast as possible. But then there are other developers that may have impacts. I'd like to hear that first before I make a decision. I don't think I have enough information today, so hopefully staff will come back. And with that, it is, you know, certainly, it sounds like you'll make an attempt for the April 15th meeting, and we'll go from there. If it can't be done, if there's more work that needs to be done, I think staff can let us know that on April 15th. But that's why, you know, I think it's a good idea, but we do need to hear the impacts of what that good idea could be for, for other development. Because I respect all developers in our community and that they all want to be fast-tracked, and when we start taking, you know, preference from one over the other, just, it just, there may be other side effects that we don't anticipate. Council Long?
Thanks, I agree. And there's always very often unforeseen or unanticipated or unconce, or unintended consequences whenever you take an action. So this is, this is pretty serious stuff, very much take it seriously, and I think if we want to effect change with our staff, we need to work with our staff, so they need to be on board as well. So hopefully it won't be too long of, of a delay for, to come back to council, but without staff's cooperation, it wouldn't be successful anyway, so I will support the referral.
Thank you. Council Davis?
So now, I'm in a spot because I'd like to support it, but if I don't support it, if I, if it passes, then I guess we go back to.
So referral, it'll come back to us.
Yeah, so, okay, but the timeline is, what are we looking at?
Think staff are attempting to.
Because, because that's important to me, because if it, if we, if it comes back by the next meeting, then that's okay, but if it, if it disappears, then May comes and goes and.
Mr. Backen, can you comment on timing again?
What I heard Mr. Seffy indicate was that we would certainly do our best. There may be some slight disruption, but we'll try to have it for the 15th if we have the information. One way or the other, we'll give you some information, some feedback by the 15th.
Okay. So I guess my, my final comment, I care about what happens in Willoughby, and I think, but you know what? I can see a real benefit to get some more information, and like I say, I'm not, I don't want to dis, I want to see it move ahead, but maybe in the, in the next meeting, we can move it ahead a little bit. Anyhow, thanks.
Council Woodward?
Yeah, no, I think those are all, those are all, those are all great comments. I think that there's, there's really, I'm not experiencing a lot of frustration at all. I think that, you know, I think for me, we just, we can, the reason I stated originally was that both of those objectives can exist simultaneously. We can, we can send it that, you know, in the next two, three months, while we maybe formalize this, this fast-track policy around three categories of applications, which is the only three that I've heard, that we can, we can send a message that, that if we have five or six applications with our two road frontiers, that those are going to get processed faster. That's it, that was the only real thing. I think that it makes sense to, to get the staff to weigh in and look at some of the implications of a, of a larger fast-track policy, which maybe incorporates two additional categories beyond supportive housing, which already has it. So, sorry, affordable housing, which already has it. So I don't support the referral as it's currently written because I don't see why they can't exist in parallel. And it's just, you know, that we do have a significant problem in, in Willoughby and these suggestions that somehow we're not respecting all developers or that, you know, some are going to be suffering at the expense of others. I think that processing times are long as they are, and we need to shorten them for applications that have a much greater public interest than others until we deal with issues around shortening our processing timelines, which we're working on. So I don't support the referral, but I also don't know, like, I, the intent was never to have it rushed for the 15th now at the expense of other projects, which people are already arguing against here. So now we're doing that, now we're costing, we're going to speed up a report at the expense of other projects, is what I just heard. So, but yeah, we're voting against that very concept. So I, I think for me, I would, I would rather than just, because I don't want it to be an incomplete report with, with a lot of missing information. I'd like, want to just address the issue and then move on to the next issue. So I don't really want a half-report if that's all that can be done in five days. That's another reason I'm not going to support this.
Thank you. Okay, I'll call a question on M1.
The amendment?
The amendment, sorry, the referral. Carried with Council Richard, Council Woodward, Council Anderson opposed. Is there any other business?
Yeah.
Council Woodward?
Yeah, so I got an email from one of the 216th residents, one of the, one of the members that advocated strongly for the corridor study, and she sent me an email, and she's got, I think, went to put other members of council as well, yes, it did, in regards to maybe involving that group, and I can follow up with who the resident was if necessary, involving that group, whether that's possible and whether they need a council motion to have them involved in formulating the terms of reference so that they, they support the study and will, will agree and, and accept its findings. I think I've got some concerns that we proceed with this corridor study and that if, if the residents there that, that are very concerned about 216th and some of the safety issues, if they, if they don't agree with the study or have some concerns about who does the study, that we're not, we're not effectively addressing their concerns, and we just end up going back in a circle. So I wanted to float that idea. I don't know if you'd motion or direction for that.
Mr. Backen, what's your, what's the process? Or Mr. Seffy, you know, it's, it's a study that we're conducting, and I don't know if this is normal practice to go to residents of the township to get terms of reference approved on the study.
Worship, I'm not sure. We've seen that communication, so we're, we're not quite sure, so it's hard to comment. The, the, the study is the property of council. Council can provide direction in terms of what they wish to see. It's really what council feels is the best. Usually, the studies are of a technical nature, and I don't think we can comment much further because we simply haven't seen the email.
Maybe we can forward the email to the staff.
Okay, so I can forward that on, and then maybe there's a mechanism for, for the terms of reference to come to council or in some sort of public fashion that they can provide some feedback on it? Would that be possible?
Just, Seffy, perhaps the status of the study, maybe just refresh our memory if you happen to recall where we're at with that process?
The terms of reference, I think, are being prepared, developed. My recollection is that the study should be done after the interchange has been opened, as opposed to prior in terms of anticipating the traffic rather than having the actual numbers in terms of the traffic on 216th. Having said that, as referenced earlier, this is not something that has been done in the past. It is a technical document, but upon council direction, staff will, will provide any opportunities that council directs.
Okay, so maybe I can update that. Maybe I can, we can get in writing in a memo of the, the current intention for the study and when, when we would complete the study, and then we can maybe potentially react to that memo. Because I think, I recall when we, when we approved the funding for that corridor study, that there was some desire to have it come back prior, be completed this year and come back prior to the 2020 budget process so that we could potentially be better informed about some of the needed or not-needed improvements along that corridor. If we don't complete it until after the interchange is open, then we would be, we'd be looking at a 2021 budget process, not constructing it until, until 2021, any improvements until 2021. I think the original intent was to, to try to speed that up. Thank you.
Knowing that, we don't know what the traffic is until after it's built, so there's, I hear what Mr. Seffy's saying, we want to do a, a safety study, but we don't have the, you know, we can guess and, you know, the modeling can be done, but they still actually need to do a safety study after too.
Well, yeah, I, I think that those are, those are good comments. I think unfortunately, when we approved the corridor study, I believe that there, maybe it was just direction and not, not formalized, that it would be, it would, the intent of that corridor study, I think, was approved to be completed prior to the 2020 budget process.
Maybe we can get a memo back.
Maybe we can double-check that and get back to us in writing on that. And I had one other item, but if there's any others, I can come back to. It was in regards to tree protection bylaw initiation process. I know that on election night, a lot of us commented, including myself and including Mayor Fros in regards to that being a priority of council, and it is a priority of council. In our strategic priority session, we did indicate that a tree canopy protection bylaw and options was a strategic priority. So given an incident in Fort Langley this past weekend, I'd like to, to ask if we, where we are on that and maybe in, in terms of council direction or the chair, Mr. Mayor, about maybe forming a mayor's task force for this item, some other ideas that may be out there that we could finally get started on this item, if that's something I can just float for, for council consideration.
Mr. Backen?
Seffy, perhaps you can recall the, the tree protection bylaw report analysis? Has that begun at this point?
Because we, you know, just want to say, we do have a lot, a lot on our plate, and to, you know, we, we do have.
My recollection is that we don't actually have a direction of council. I don't think so. We have dealt with it in Brooks with unfairness committee plan, and.
It may have been part of the priority sessions with Mr. McIntosh.